All right, good evening. It is six o'clock on March ninth. We are going to start this weekend Cooperative School Board meeting. And I, we're gonna do the presentation first. So Matt McDonald, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself? And he's going to speak about the, all the wonderful work happening in the Learning Commons where we are.
Hold that. Keep holding. Hello, my name is Matt McDonald, and I am an English teacher and social studies teacher here at Sauhegan High School. And beginning this year, I have a new role called Student Learning Coordinator. And so I'm here tonight to talk to you about sort of one of the three main parts of my position here. Uh, and so next slide is, so the, the job description for the Student Learning Coordinator has three main parts. So, uh, first of all, I am the ELO Coordinator, but I won't be talking about that in a presentation tonight. I'm also a member of the data team. I'll be talking about that a little bit. And the bulk of what I'm going to talk about is the Learning Commons, which is the space that we're in right now. And so in the job description for the Student Learning Coordinator, it mentioned four specific things for the Learning Commons. And can you hit his next working? Okay, there we go. Thank you. So for the Learning Commons Coordinator is the main goal is to create a welcoming environment, create policies and procedures for the space to provide direct intervention services and to administer academic support. And so we've been working really hard this year to do those four things in the Learning Commons. And so that's going to be the bulk of what I'm going to talk to you about now. So next. So the Learning Commons, it's this room right here, the balcony area beyond that door, and then those two rooms beyond the balcony. So it's a pretty large space. At one time it was four separate classrooms. So this is a pretty big space. And so can you hit the next button? Thank you. So what this space is, is it's, it's a mixed use space. So there's lots of different furniture over there. There are couches and comfy chairs and coffee tables. There are these four, uh, four person tables for group work, high top tables with school, uh, with stools for two or three students to work in. So what students do in the Learning Commons, it's a mix of a lot of things. So you've got individuals who come here during a free period to work on homework by themselves. You've got groups of students coming together with free periods to work on projects together. Sometimes you've got a group of friends sitting on the couch, all working on different, uh, work altogether. So it's, it's really a mixed use space with students coming here to work on lots of things individually and together. The real sort of hub of activity, the light liveliest part of Learning Commons is definitely the Math Help Here table, which is over there. It's a big table in the center of the room, and it is staffed by two wonderful people, one of whom is Tara Pompeo, who is a para educator with a passion and talent for math. And then Joanne McDeed, who's in the picture up there, who was a math teacher here for years and retired last year, and we're lucky to have her this year as a math tutor. And so the Math Help Peer Table is just a place that all day long, students can come and get help, but also just work on math. And it's been really great because so far there's no stigma at all to getting help at this Math Help Peer Table. It's all kinds of students from all classes just coming to work on math. And, and whether it's Core Math One or our some AP Math classes, students come and work at that table and get help from Tara and Joanne. It's definitely a very lively place. We also have peer tutors. We've got peer tutors trained in math, uh, writing and in chemistry. So it's, we've got lots of opportunities for support throughout the day. All right, next. So the benefits, I think, for students spending time here in the Learning Commons, uh, can you hit next again? Thank you. Is that it's a new place for our students with free periods to learn how to manage their own time. Because part of having a free period isn't just doing whatever you want all the time, but help giving helping, us helping you figure out how to use your time properly. And so the Learning Commons is a place where students can manage that time, staying on campus, being supervised by adults in a comfortable spot. But also, this is the key part, which is a new system here, is they now have access to this support in reading and math almost every single period of the day, on demand, onsite, right at that table. Uh, next please. So how is it being used? So, uh, I think, I'm very sorry, but I think for this, every line you have to hit next forward, it's not.
No problem.
I'm very.
My honor and pleasure.
Okay, so I think someone about to show you a bunch of numbers and data and statistics that we've, so we keep track of every student who comes into the Learning Commons and what if they get any support. Uh, almost all of them are in eleventh to twelfth grade. So since ninth and 10th graders don't have free periods, they can't just come here and access the Learning Commons during a free period. The juniors and seniors, though, anytime they have a free period, they can access this space. So most of these numbers are based on 11th and 12th graders. So, all right, so next. So on a gold day, which would be the odd periods, throughout the day, we have an average of seventy point seven nine students using this space, these sort of free areas. Uh, the next line, for math, ten point five six students on average throughout a gold day, approached the Math Help Peer Table for math support. That doesn't mean only ten point five six students are working on math in Learning Commons. It just means that those students approached the table and said, hey, can you help me with number three or, or whatever they're working on? Next line, two point one five students throughout the day, I do a writing conference with them. So I, for English, I've only been tracking this year, the students I help on a writing assignment. That's all I'm tracking so far this year. I'm, I'm going to, I want to track more next year. So this means that throughout the day, I might talk to a student about an assignment. We might talk about a book they're reading. I'm not tracking that quite yet. This is just a student that I have sat down with, worked on a writing assignment with them throughout the day. So that's, that's what it looks like on gold days. Our black days are even busier. And honestly, this, if, if I had separate statistics just for semester two, it would show our black days are very, very busy. I wouldn't be surprised if we had over a hundred students in here throughout the day on black days this semester. So on black days, we average about ninety point six eight students throughout the day. The next line, we help about thirteen point three six students at the math table. And then next line is about one point nine seven students on the writing conferences per day. And then one more line here is there are multiple periods where we have over forty students in this space. The beginning of the day and end of the day are kind of slow because a lot of students with free periods will leave. So that means that those middle of the day periods get very busy in here. There was one day right, right before vacation where I think there were forty eight students throughout this space one period. So it's a pretty lively, well-used space. All right. And then so the last slide, again, every line is its own, its own press of a button. So the future of the Learning Commons. So what do I hope to do in this space in the future? I definitely want to increase the number of writing conferences I do each day. I've had, it's definitely a struggle to get students that you don't know to share their writing with you. It's not quite the same as other subjects. Something about sharing a piece of writing that you've created with someone that you don't know that is a stumbling block that I'm going to work on. I want to do a lot more outreach in the humanities classes to go in there and meet them first. So that maybe then they'll feel a little more comfortable sharing writing with me. Uh, the next thing that we will definitely be working on is to continue to use data to make informed decisions related to, relating to organizational performance, instructional effectiveness and student learning. So if you could hit next one more time. So there, there've been, we've done sort of like one big push already this year in looking at data to inform instruction. So when we got the PSAT data from the fall PSAT, Joanne McDeed, the retired math teacher who works in the Learning Commons, and I, we looked at the reports, and Joanne went through every single problem on the PSAT math section to determine exactly what skill each question was addressing, and figured out exactly in what class we introduced that skill to our students in, and then presented all of that data to the math department to look at that, to see what the implications were for instruction. I did the same thing with English. So I went through every question and figured out what exactly is this question asking our students to do, and presented all of that data to the English department. And these PSAT reports that we use, they show question by question, what percentage of our student shows A, which percent shows B, which percent shows C, which percent shows D, and compared it to the state average for each question and each answer choice as well. So we presented all of that to the math department and English department. And those departments now are in the process of looking at that data to figure out what does this say about our instruction? And what could we do to help our students better? The next piece of data that I'm sort of even more excited about is, so Tara and Joanne at the Math Help Table, they have this, they have a notebook where they keep track of exactly what they help every student with every single day. And this means that by the end of the year, we'll be able to present to the math department really specific data like, in unit three, on assignment seven, students across the board struggled with number five. So we can figure out regardless of teacher, what exactly is it about problem number five that's tripping our students up? And so Tara and Joanne have day-to-day data, period by period, of exactly what skill, what problem they helped every student with. And I think the math department's really going to like digging into that data to see what it says about instruction, our courses and our student performance. And then the last, I think this is the last, no, second to last, no, this is the last. We also hoping in the future to develop some systems to proactively help students based on assessment data. So instead of waiting for students to come to us, maybe looking at either PSAT, SAT, or just course scores or competency scores to see if there are, if there are pockets of students struggling with certain areas, how can we get them to come down here before it's too late in order to help them with some interventions? So that is what we're doing in this space. That's the future. What are your questions?
Okay, wow. I'm, you know, not just impressed with the, the work getting done, but the quality of work getting done. That sounds really incredible. So thank you.
Thank you.
For all those efforts and thanks to everybody in, in the room. Uh, so let me open up to any board members, any questions, comments? Ms. Zimmerman.
Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you. These presentations, by the way, are very informative. Thanks, Mike and Steve for allowing this. The proactive help for students, the last point, um, yeah, I could see that being a little tricky. What, do you have some ideas, I guess? I mean, one idea came to my mind, but what, what are some of the brainstorms, uh, along that?
I have, I do have a lot of ideas. I think where we would need to figure out institutionally sort of everything that goes along with calling students down to give them interventions. Because I, I, I do have wonders about, well, do we need parent permission for that? Is it opt-in or opt-out? Is it if we, do we bring them down one by one, or do we bring them down into small groups? So all of those logistical things we would need to work out organizationally. But I do think that, so one of the, one of the responsibilities of my position is at the beginning of each month, I want, I run a report from Power School of every student who is earning an NC in any class. And then we shared that, that report with the guidance counselors and some other people in the school to look at it to see like if there are any students that we need to reach out to. I think that's a place where we could definitely use that data. Because we're already running the report. It's pretty easy to understand. So if we see a group of students having a problem in a certain class, it wouldn't be that difficult to then address that. It's just, like I said, figuring out all the logistical elements and how do we get them down here and that kind of thing.
Right. And I guess, I guess if there was a referral from that, either be a teacher or through the Power School data, um, I guess that would be an interesting thing to track. When that name is known.
Yep.
Then you can see, well, did that person actually show up? And I think parents would really benefit in understanding, A, their son, their, their child's been referred. And B, if they're showing up, because they could actually encourage participation if it was, let's say, lacking or insufficient.
So that's a, that's, that's definitely a place we want to go.
Right. And the other question that I had, um, was so your, your, your utilization rates, about seventeen, eighteen percent are, are seeking writing support specifically or math at the math table. So the rest, I presume, the vast majority of the students are self, self-directed.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then from the square footage standpoint, um, is this space uh, right size, uh, insufficient, or, or is it, is it, um, you know, too big?
This space right here that we're in right now, most of the time it is not used for meetings or trainings during the day, which means there is, there is enough space. So the students who want a quieter area can come over here. And then students who are okay with talking are over there. But when there is a meeting in here during the school day or training during the school day, everyone has to smush into that space, it, it gets a little hectic. And I think a lot of students do start trickling away and maybe just sitting in the hallway or something. So most of the time, or the, yeah, but the library is also busy as well. Yeah.
Right.
But, but when this space is open, it's enough space. When this space is used, it gets, it gets a little cramped. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So one, I, I just love your enthusiasm. It's, I, it's one of those things I always like about talking to the Sauhegan staff who, you know, um, I talked to so many of you, you can tell really care about the kids on the job and, and that sort of thing. Um, I just had a couple of questions. Uh, well, one to add on, on to what John was just saying. Those additional kids who are self-directing, as I understand it, may also be talking to you or one of the other folks, but it's just not on a formal like, hey, can you help me with this writing? It might be about, hey, I'm working on this or something else. Um, and then the, the peer tutors, are those, are they volunteering? How do they become peer tutors? How much time are they down here? I think that's wonderful, but I'd love to know more about that.
So that our National Honor Society, NHS, they've had a peer tutor system in, uh, for, for a couple of years now. So some of the students who are peer tutoring are NHS students who have gotten a teacher to recommend them to be a peer tutor and a peer to recommend them to be a peer tutor. And then I do a training with them about confidentiality and how to best help people instead of do their work for them to help them instead. But then there was also a student who approached me and Anne, Anne Swift, the math domain leader, who wanted to kickstart a, a separate math peer tutor. So this was a student-initiated math peer tutor program. So Anne and I worked with him to develop the protocols and trainings. And so now we've got students from NHS, but then we also have any math student whose teacher recommends them and a peer recommends them can also be a peer tutor. And then the chemistry came about because a lot of the math peer tutors, chemistry teachers sue down or saw the list of them and said they could also teach, they could also tutor chemistry. So then we kind of talked to them about that and they're, they're good. They're, they're doing the chemistry now too.
And are they just coming down under like their free period?
So what they do is every Monday morning, I send an email to all of them, asking them when they're available this week, and then I put them on a schedule. One thing I didn't have time to show you is we do have a schedule that's posted online every single day. It's on the Sauhegan website and it's on the, on the Google Classroom that tells you period by period who is in here to, to give support. So any parent or student or staff member can look at that. And it will say, say, second period, it'll say Matt, Tara, peer tutor, Cohen, writing, chemistry and math.
Wonderful. Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Um, so the only, only two things I have. One, um, any thought of adding foreign language tutor, peer tutors?
That's actually the next, the next subject I think we should add, because we've actually had a few students who are, who, who they learned Spanish as their primary language. And I've approached to say, can I, can I be a peer tutor in Spanish? I've spoken in my entire life. So I'm working with the World Language Department to figure out how to, first of all, determine if someone is qualified to be a peer tutor if they're not in a language class. And then also how to kind of train them and get them ready to go. So that's the next, that's the next step.
Nice. Um, and then my, my, my one question is, is there any other support or things you need for the space or for the program?
I think really the only thing is, is we just need time to figure out how to best use the space and do everything we were talking about with providing interventions. Um, and that's really all I can think of. We've got the furniture. We've got the space. We have the materials. It's ready to go. It's happening.
And we're using it now.
Yeah, we're using it.
It's great. Thank you.
Just, um, Mike talked about the vision for this space last year. Um, and to his credit, this is what his vision was. And he's talked for a long time about trying to give students reasons to stay in our four walls. And we've got other things happening. As soon, there'll be a calm room right at, working on, but this is, I mean, we're seeing it. They're choosing, uh, as you said, this is upperclassmen who can choose other things. They're choosing here to get academic support because they find it useful and it's connected. This work plus the work on, on heavy work on instructional and, and teacher support with supports here. This is the work. And I just, uh, Mike and I had discussions. He articulated this vision. Um, Matt, he thought you were the right person. You are the right person because it's a unique, I mean, we talk about some of these positions in Tara and Joanne, it's Piper stuff. Right? It's, it's, it's that you've got to make it a welcoming, enthusiastic and quality experience. You're doing all that. And just with Mike here, Mike, this is your vision. I feel good about this. This is what you created. You hired the right people, put them in the right place. And I, you know, may always laugh about your comfy chairs, but I know it matters.
It does. I mean, uh, kids want to work in spaces that are inspirational and they want to be around people that, you know, they can rely on. And, and, uh, and when we designed how we wanted to evolve, because this was in the works, you know, for the last couple of years. And as we've tried to put into play, it was about finding, you know, Matt and then, and then working with, you know, other administrators, you know, determining like Tara and to, to move into this role and then finding monies to, to, to have a tutor, right? And, uh, we want to create a culture where kids want to be here and they want to, you know, own their learning. And, but they need the space, they need the people and they need the, the, the environment. And I think we're going to be on to something, you know, as this work connects to the counseling department and the student support team. Um, and you'll just, you'll just see more of it as, as it gets on. And this is only year one, really. So, you know, we're well on our way. So it's a, it's a real credit to them.
And, and just to give some credit, this is one of the uses of ESER funds. Um, this is Joanne. Joanne's position is a grant-funded position on the closing the academic gap that we, you know, can attribute to it. So it's good use. And Christine and I wrote the grant. Um, but it's, it's used, so finds and we'll be in it, and we get a chance to take a look at the impact. So we'll have real data when the ESER funds run out to propose for additional supports, maybe in the next iteration of the budget process. But this year it was a perfect use of ESER funds, right, supporting closing the gap, you're closing the gap. And I just, I really appreciate what you're doing. It's just phenomenal stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Two, sorry, just two more follow-ups. And we sit here long enough.
Yeah.
For a while. Just that what you said about the PSAT data analysis is really intriguing. I've often, I mean, personally experienced recently in, was studying for the SAT, but the questions are, you know, similarly styled. And one of the things that was a struggle for my student, I can imagine it is for others, is if you're not used to seeing a question asked in a particular way, that it's unfamiliar and you think you don't know, but actually, oh, you see an X and a Y squared. Oh, that's a circle. And it's just because the equation is, and just as one math example, the equation is expressed differently than maybe you taught, just having a confidence. Um, and so seeing that, um, rather than, and it's not so much teaching to the test, but test-taking strategies and the confidence that, that, that they actually do.
Yes.
They are familiar with this and that they had an opportunity to see it in different ways and they gain that confidence. And I suppose the same thing is true for, uh, language arts, just being able to access data quickly and confidently. Um, rather than having infinite time to come up with, you know, your deep thoughts on something. That's not what these tests are designed to do. So I'm, that's amazing what you're doing there. Um, I'd be look, look forward to an update on how that data analysis is, what it's showing, I mean, a year. Um, and then.
I mean, I can tell you one quick thing that I even worked with a teacher on today is that in my analysis, I found that our students struggled most on PSAT questions where it required you to read the entire passage before you answered any of the questions. So our students tended to do well on questions where it referred to a certain line number or paragraph. But their struggle was on, you have to read the whole pair, the whole, the whole passage, then answer a question about the passage as a whole. That's where we, a lot of our students struggle. So just today I was meeting with a teacher who's planning a, a unit. And she wanted to address some of the reading skills that our PSAT results showed our students were struggling with. And so now she is going to give students lots of questions that require reading an entire passage before going back to just a paragraph or line. So that's one of the first things that teachers have done is start writing questions in the style of PSAT and planning out new units based on some of the results. It's already happening. Which is pretty cool.
And just to be clear, not every question should be posed like that.
No.
This is just adding to the, the cadre of, of styles and questions that seems to be based. Perfect. And then, um, my final question is the tutoring. Um, are those students who, who, I mean, that's quite a process to be recommended by a teacher, recommended by a student, and then to go through your training, and it's a time commitment.
Yeah.
Are, is that, are, are those like folded into ELO type of opportu, uh, are they getting credit for that?
They're getting community service hours for it. I could see it turning into some sort of ELO though. That could be interesting. Student interested in teaching possibly. Yeah. But right now it's just been for community service hours.
Okay. Yeah, I would maybe consider that depending on.
It's interesting.
On, I mean, I guess there would be some sort of extra reflection or some kind of production that would come out of the yellow, but, um, yeah, I would encourage that.
Yeah, that's interesting.
So I had one.
Yeah.
One more quick. I noticed, so I found those in the schedule.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Um, and, and I saw you have that three to three thirty spot.
Yes.
I'm wondering, do you end up seeing any of the freshmen, sophomores either then or during advisory, that sort of thing?
Sometimes we, sometimes we do. Yes, we do. And we don't, we're, we struggle a lot to keep track of the students who come for help after school because of the fact that often we have to go to some sort of meeting after school. So it's harder to track, but that is, we do see some freshmen and sophomores sometimes. And also during Saber Flex classes, so all freshmen have Saber Flex classes. If they request permission from their teacher, they can also come here to work. So sometimes ninth graders do come here to work during Saber Flex class and some after school, sometimes during lunch too. Because we, we, Joanne is often at the Math Help Here table during lunch even, and she has a little crew that comes during lunch sometime to work on math with her.
See, your question leads to another question. Okay. Yeah, ninth and 10th graders, is there, is there a, I guess the question is, two parts, like is, is the Learning Commons available and, and is there a, uh, help either tutors or, or staff after school?
After school is inconsistent with, it, it really, it truly is.
I guess, maybe that's not the solution. I don't know. But, um, I guess if, if the ninth and 10th graders largely don't have this as a resource because of the lack of free periods.
Yes.
Uh, maybe the question to think about is what, when they need those interventions and that help and they're seeking that, what is their resource?
Yes.
And maybe it already exists. I don't know, or maybe you just.
I would say that for the most part, what happens during Saber Flex class is if a freshman needs help with something, they would walk up to their teacher in Saber Flex and this Saber Flex teacher would help them if they can help them. Otherwise, let's say the student needs math help and two rooms down, it's another Saber Flex class with their team math teacher. I feel like that's where a lot of those interventions happen is they stay within the freshman teachers, just a couple of rooms down when the teacher also has a Saber Flex period. But then there are plenty of times where a, a ninth grader approaches their Saber Flex teacher, asks for help. The teacher says, oh, I'm not a math person. I can't really help you with that. Why don't you go to the Learning Commons? And they do come to the Learning Commons, but it's really just maybe one or two students per period. And and, and, and most often they're sort of like learning responsibility at the same time. So the expectation is that they come to Learning Commons, introduce themselves to me, and then I send a message to their teacher saying that they successfully made it to the Learning Commons and that they are currently here. So I think they are getting interventions, but not through the Learning Commons. They're, they're in the annex, getting the interventions from their teachers who also have the same Saber Flex at the same time.
Great. Thanks.
And that it, I, I can't remember, Ralph, if we had the update of the Community Council project regarding the, um, Learning Commons. Do y'all remember anything like that? Yeah.
So we passed that proposal and, uh, there's a few sketches on the walls in the Learning Commons right now. They're a work in progress, I believe. I don't know when they'll be finished.
And the supplies that we ordered with the Community Council funds arrived today.
So just speaking to the comfort of the space, um, that was a good collaboration there. Great. Anything else? All right, Matt, thank you so much. Tara, thank you for coming this evening and for all your hard work as well. And same to Joanne, even though she's not here this evening, please pass on our, our thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, um, so back to our agenda. We're going to go to our public input, one of two. Uh, there is nobody here in the public. No, let's see if there's anyone on, online. Nobody online. Okay, so we will keep it open and come back at the end of the meeting to make sure. Um, reports received. We might, let's see what's next. Yes. Why don't we go to consent agenda and then we'll come back to the reports received, um, for the principal's report. So in our consent agenda, our policies that we did as a first reading last month, and this would be our second reading. Do you want me to just go through them or do you want to, I can, I can walk through them?
Yeah, we can go through them. And if there's a particular question, I will try to answer it.
Yeah, I think we went through them pretty quickly last time. Um, so the board to discuss, that one, we don't need to really pass, the BDA, BBBH. I'm not sure what the.
Well, okay, I thought the first one we have on the list I'm looking is at page seventeen in the agenda.
BEDH, yeah, I'm just looking at the list that was on that right before the.
The first one, is that missing from the packet?
It says to discuss, and I'm not sure if, I don't know, I'm not aware of a need to discuss, but I'm going to move on.
Yeah.
Um, BEDH, uh, is public participation in school board meetings.
That was just the update to request, you know, to match what the statute now requires.
So any questions before we move on? Okay. Uh, ECAF, school board, school bus audio and visual. We will need to adopt this. Any questions? Uh, E C A F, school bo- school bus audio and visual. We will need to adopt this. Any questions? Oh, E E A, student transportation. Any questions? E E A A, video and surveillance. G B C D, background investigation and criminal history records check. Hmm, nothing. J F C J, prohibition of weapons on school property. We need to rescind this one. John, did you have a question on that? No? Okay. J H attendance, absenteeism and truancy. So Hegan has already adopted, no update needed, never mind. Uh, I H C D slash L E B advanced coursework. Which we need to adopt. Any questions? Um, I K, earning of credit. Any questions? I K F, high school graduation.
So that was one, there was a question last time. Um, I just, I saw it in the minutes.
Yes.
It's not here last time. Um, and the question I think you all had is, well, but isn't this about to change?
Mm hmm.
And the answer is that yes, it's about to change, but until it changes, the policy we have on the books does not match the policy that we've got. So all this was I went to the Sohagen website, took from the book, the exact requirements, put it in, and yes, it'll need to be updated again. Once the graduation
But at least we will be in alignment.
But at least we're consistent until
Okay. Thank you for that.
And, um, don't, sorry to go backwards, but the J F C I, the prohibition on we- of weapons on school property, that's because that was, um,
I'm trying to remember.
Um, um, covered in another policy.
That's my recollection. Yes.
I mean, it's not, not rescinding it to say, oh, it's fine to bring weapons.
Right, right. It was covered.
Some covered somewhere else.
C J, yeah.
Yeah.
I could watch that out for you. That's my recollection. It was a while ago on that one though.
Same with J F C at the end. Believe.
They're opening eyes in them and get a rescission motion for the next agenda.
A very long commentary about this. This has been ongoing.
Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong card here. Um, just can you remember what about this one?
Uh, I can talk a little bit.
Uh, so this was um, J, J F C J. Yes, prohibition of weapons on school property. So Sohagen rescind. Yeah, it should not be an act of policy. Um, and so there's J F C and then there's J F C J. J F C was superseded by J I C D.
I, right.
J I C D.
J I C C D.
When J I C D was adopted in two thousand and eight, um, and most recently updated in twenty twenty one. Um, and J F C J was superseded by J I C I, when J I C I was adopted on August twentieth, twenty nineteen. So we should have rescinded it then, so there's no conflict. Yeah, so there currently is a conflict between the policies. So that's why it needs to be rescinded. So sorry, it took me a little while to Yeah.
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 Through that.
Thank you. Thank you. That makes, that makes sense. And that also helps the J F C, I think, John as well.
And I suppose maybe for all of our benefit, we could improve this summary to include some of the basics.
Of what the why or
Why, you know, rescind
Next time.
Superseded by blank.
Mm hmm.
It resolves conflicts, just
Mm hmm.
Something that's concise enough and informative enough.
Yep.
Adopt for changes in the law.
I remember, I remember a discussion about the one being superseded and I'm like, I just don't remember the details. Thank you for the details. Appreciate that. Um, okay, so, uh, the, the other two, I K F C, alternate diploma for students with significant cognitive disabilities. Any question? And then I M B C, alternative credit options. And then J F C. So those are all in our packet under the consent agenda. Um, and also under consent agenda, budget transfer. Everyone understands that one. I think welcome. Um, February fourteenth minutes and February twentieth draft minutes are also in there.
The only thing I had on the February fourteenth minutes is it lists me as being in attendance and I was not here. So we need that correction.
Not a problem.
You cross me off that? Yep. No, that's, I, that's what I figured. That's what I figured I'd, I'd just pointed out so that someone can remove it.
Amended February fourteenth. Okay. Um, can I have a motion to adopt consent agenda with the February fourteenth amended minutes?
Make motion. I'll second that.
Second that. And since we're all here, all those in favor. And that's everyone here. Thank you very much. We'll go back to reports received. So Mike, we, we skipped that while you were
Ah, yeah.
stepped out so we could come back for any questions with principals report. Um, is there anything you want to cover with that before we open up for any questions?
Um, the, the one thing I wanted to, to revisit with the, the whole South Heagan board was the, there's the hiring process for, uh, for the, for the principal, kind of update on some processes we got going for other positions. Uh, so, you know, John, after the meeting we had up in Mount Vernon, uh, um, you know, I started to think a little bit about, you know, you wanted to see how we thought. I mean, I, this is one of the things I took away. People want to see how, how you think during this process. And, um, you know, so we're, we're still, the process is going to remain the same. But one of the things that, you know, I spoke with Steve about is, uh, creating a, some sort of spreadsheet says candidate one moved on for this reason, not moved on for these reasons, and, and submitting that to, to Steve, who can submit it to, to step. So you can see in that process how we thought, uh, we won't put names to protect. New Hampshire's a super small state, you know, but we will, you know, uh, kind of walk you through our thought process on how people go from the application process to, to this, to the, the screening round. That way you can see kind of how we are thinking. And then the, the real crux of it is that we get, and we have teachers involved in that. We have some administrators involved in that. Get to the next round, you have myself, Galen, Jess Wallace, Ryan Lemieux, to, to have fifteen, twenty minute like meetings with the candidates that we do choose to screen. And then from there, uh, that's where we turn it over to like, uh, three adults here, Elizabeth Charbonneau, Kelly Brayley and Jenny Deenick to organize the, the interviews here where they'll, they'll snake through student committees, staffing committees, the community board, alumni committees. And then that's really where the meat of the interview process takes place. And, uh, but for me, I, I wanted to, as I mentioned last time, you know, be really comfortable with the people that we present to the, to the group, that we can work with that person. But I also want to respect that people want to know how we think. And I thought that document, um, is a, a way for a window in on how we do that at that point of process. I just wanted to update that. If you have any questions on that, I can talk about some other things that we got going on with hiring. There's Yeah.
Quick, wait, how many, as far as those kind of more extended interviews with the different groups, you know, how many, how many candidates are you hoping to get to that point? Like, would that be a
Ideally, uh,
Like a three to five sort of thing?
Yeah, three to six, depending on how many quality people are. It's typical. Um, I, you know, right now the, the application deadline is the tenth and, uh, of March, and then we kind of start the process to, on the thirteenth, and we have a meeting scheduled already. Um, and after some conversations with, you know, veteran teachers and people who've been through the process here, we wanted to kind of consolidate the window, you know, so you see a pretty aggressive timeline, the tenth, the seventeenth, the twenty fourth, hoping to have nominations to, to the board in early April, um, because we want to be able to find the appropriate match and, uh, and we, and sometimes when you go into the long process, i- 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 at this point of the year, you lose out. And, and, and I did talk to John Dowd and he talked stories about how the process took too long and, you know, in previous searches, and we might've not got the appropriate match that we wanted at that moment in time. And so there, there's that piece to it.
You said you've got, that initial screening committee then does include like teachers and other people from the school. Cause I know
Yeah.
questions we got
It does.
public afterwards.
Yeah, that, that first one has John Dowd and Amy Gibbons.
Perfect.
They've been here since
Yep.
early nineties. So I think they, they're, they're comfortable and, and willing. And the next round has some people at a different stage of their career. They still got like ten, you know, fifteen years left to work and, and they're going to be in the mix. And then we do have a process that students and teachers and staff members are going to be solicited to serve on interview panels during the, the day. So uh, a survey went out to, to the staff about qualities and characteristics. We got sixty two responses. And so we have that data to kind of help guide us as we go through the screening piece.
Right. Thank you.
Um, the other job that we're going to be hiring, position we're going to hire for is a, uh, counseling, school counseling director. So we're in the process of that. And, uh, um, so I've actually started meeting some of the candidates when short ten minute zooms, because candidates have that's a, a position that's done differently in different places. So they have, hey, what's that job look like for you? I want to make sure I'm a match. So I find with positions like that uh, in domain leader positions, you know, talking briefly for ten, fifteen minutes informally about the school, about the position, about the vision of South Heagan, really giving paints a real clear picture to the candidates of what we're looking for and what the school is all about. So, um, and after that, we had a, a person withdraw, you know, because they didn't think they were a match for, for the position. And, and that's the point of it, right? And so then we'll get into the hiring process, looking to hire that during, or go through the interview process the week of the twentieth of March. Um, there are other openings throughout New Hampshire for that position and that that candidate pool is, uh, pretty competitive, pretty small.
Hmm.
So we're trying to be a bit aggressive with that one. So those are the two things. And we have other positions that we're going to fill and we'll start that staffing process. And, uh, and we announced this to the, the student body on Monday at Spotlight and the staff that would be soliciting students to be part of this process. Um, as far as, uh, you know, principals report go, you know, this one was a little bit brief, more brief than, than previous ones. Cause when we realized, we only had like two weeks since the last one. So there wasn't much going on and we had Fang Fest and then break. So it, it, you know, it's a little bit, you know, bare bones compared to the other stuff, but we're in that lull, right, of between winter athletics and spring athletics. But it's also the time of the year that this is the big chunk of time where the learning happens between now and April break. And so we're trying to be pretty assertive in, in the, in the culture that we're creating here and, and working between now and April, because after April, it's it's, you know, seniors are really kind of, they're done. And then juniors and everyone else is a little more comfortable and May is full of events and celebrations and awards. So this is the chunk of time that we're trying to get some things in. Um, I think we're all trying to wake everyone up and get them going on Monday was not as easy as as we thought, you know, a lot of people dragging a little bit Monday and Tuesday. And I find today, it, I don't know what happened, but we haven't had like a five day week in a while. You know, and so people were overextended and tired brains, right? In at capacity at Thursday around noon. And I'm like, we still got a day and a half left. So, um, so we still got the, 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 those things happening. Um, lots of good things happening, you know, with the, with the kids and uh, it, it's really comfortable here right now. You know, a lot of people just, you know, enjoying themselves and, and, and using the place to to what they want to get out of it. And, and, uh, I feel like there's good work happening and kids are treating each other well and we're in good spots.
All right, um, let's open up for questions.
I have some serious questions. Um, the, uh, you, you rattled off the name so fast, I couldn't really keep up with you. So for the principal search.
I can give you a copy, John.
Of the, okay, yeah. So
Yeah, all the names.
Right. I wish you'd just, you know, trust me on this. I have plenty of people involved in it, you know? So I'm not trying to fight you, Mike.
I know, but like, you keep asking me.
I do, because I just, here's my one question. Is there, is there opposition to sharing the candidate specific names of the candidates in their application packets with board members? Is there, is there a, is there a negative impact to that? Is there a reason, a reason why that's not um, being considered seriously?
So, uh, most people at this level of position request their name doesn't get released beyond a very tight circle until their finalist stage. Um, so the concern is if, and, and unintentionally or with, the, the more people that get out, uh, we're getting people who are well, like I, and my, Mike and I have reviewed some of the, some of the candidates are additional, are, are, are having, um, opportunities in their own districts and they're applying here. And it would, just to protect them, we, they, they, really the request is until you get to the finalist stage, you're trying to keep the list as, as tight as possible of their names. Once they're finalists, they understand then. And then it's usually when they go and talk to their home school. So, uh, it is, it is an extremely small state. Everybody here is connected. Um, so it really is trying to keep it as small as possible until the finalist stage, until the group, really that gets to those committing, those small
To that five, you know, to, to that week of the twenty fourth, uh, because it's sensitive. You have sitting, you have sitting principals, you have sitting central office types, you have sitting assistant principals who are looking for other opportunities. But they don't want to broadcast that to to their colleagues, because there's a, there's a stigma of like, hey, if you're looking for another job, you're kind of checked out a little bit. And some people don't want that out there.
And we have a, a candidate that's been in their position for one year. Um, it'll be hard for them. I mean, if it's a finalist, they get it. But if they're not a finalist, we don't want to disrupt their professional standing at their location. So, um, that's the, the traditional piece. Um, but we, in, in discussion with Mike, we, and I appreciate how Mike phrased it. We wanted to provide as much information on the reasoning why. Um, but if I was, if I was, if I was an assistant principal at Hoptee Middle High School applying for this position, I really would like to keep the, the position as close to the best as possible to the finalist. Because I know people at Hoptee that would have been concerned if I was applying other places and not there. Just to be fair, and we don't ever want to hurt anyone else and, and believe it, Mike and I, no, we know too many people. I believe there's, there's people who I, uh, who I know on this list and, and for various, I, it could be that my twelve year PhD journey. It could be other journeys that I've been on pretty long. So it's just really out of respect and to protect their professional standing in their home place.
Um, gonna respond to that. I, that is good logic. Makes perfect sense for, for a broad group of people. Um, we have an obligation and receive regularly uh, and a duty to keep confidential information confidential. Um, so I don't know that that
And I'm gonna
This clearly applies
So I'm, I'm gonna re- I'm gonna also respond that, um, that first round where all the applications come in, that Mike is sitting down with John Dowd, um, Amy Gibbons and and, and a, a group of people. If they choose to move, to not move somebody forward, I don't need to know that, because that is that first screen that says there is no reason to move this person forward. And they're going to give us a list of why, but I don't need to know that. I'm not going to ever put a name back on that list. And I'm not going to second guess him on that right now. I don't need to know that name. I don't. I think there's a, there's, there's a, I'm never going to put the name back on. So the only reason I would say that I'm even reviewing it is because I want to second guess what he's doing. And I'm not in that position to do that.
Can I follow up on that? Cause I mean, that, that is a little bit, that's a little bit my perspective. I mean, there's a part of me that's always curious, you know, and like, so who is it that's happening? And I, I get that. I mean, I, you know, but I cannot imagine a situation where if two of our senior teachers, our future principal and whoever else is on the group, those are the three that come, I mean, our super, our future superintendent who's going to have to be working with this principal say, yeah, no, that I need to look at it and say, well, what would I would say? And, and, and I say that in part because I also know that it is a small state. And there are things that you all know, people you've had experiences with, people you know things about, that if I'm looking at that, I might not know. I mean, you might know just looking at it, oh gosh, I know that person. That person works so and so, so and so, so and so. These people have worked with them. They are never going to be a fit for the school. But there's no way I'm going to know that, looking at that document. And so if that's the determination that the screening committee makes, if you brought me the list and said, these are the people we cut, there's never going to be a time I say, I think you're wrong. Why did the teachers not think this person would be a good fit? Why did our future superintendent think he couldn't work with this person? You know, because that, I mean, one, that's not a process we're ever going to get through in March if we You know, because that, I mean, one, that's not a process we're ever going to get through in March if we do it that way. You know, that's going to be forever. Um, you know, we're, we're going to miss candidates, but two, I, you know, like Stephanie was saying, I don't think that initial screening process, like, I don't know why we would need that information and need to second guess what our experienced teachers and our future superintendent are as a group and in a kind of community effort, making a decision, this person can't move forward.
And I just have a very quick thing. When we were hiring for the superintendent position, while I did not fall out in the same lines with you about the early candidates, I could at least see the logic of it because the superintendent is our employee.
That person was a consultant and was helping, which is different than.
Sure, sure. But I'm just saying, just the position, the superintendent is our one employee. So we could reasonably ask for whatever level of information. Anything further down, it, it is our superintendent and how whatever process we kind of mostly approved of, the majority of us at the last um, meeting, they're really charged with finding that person for us. And our only, our only required role is the con confirming of that person. It's great if we get more information, but as I understand it, that's kind of our that's our, that's our reasonable expectation. And it's great that we're going to be involved in the process a little more than that, unless I'm mistaken.
Yes, we are.
I am mistaken.
We, no, no, we are going, no, we are going to be included.
After some initial. I'm incredibly comfortable with the process that we have outlined.
Us and a bunch of community members are going to be involved and former alumni and all that as we get down to those later, later.
So those are our reasons, John. Sorry.
I'm not persuaded.
That's okay.
Don't get it.
That's okay.
You seem to think that it's antagonistic. It's not. I'd like to see the caliber of applicants that we get. I would like to say, oh, well, this person looks good on paper. Um, but oh, there's some insights. It's probably not a good fit for these reasons. Oh, that's very important.
And he's going to give us a summary.
Yeah, but not with the name. Now I'm almost going to be able to see the credentials based on, it's, it's, I don't understand the problem. Um, and the resistance. Um, another question. Um, the, I'm pleased to hear the over 60 uh, faculty, uh, response staff. I don't, I'm not sure if those teachers only or teachers.
Any staff member.
Any staff member.
So pair administrative assistant.
That's pretty, pretty good. Um.
Yeah. Cause uh, in 2020, there was 32 responses. Right now there's 62. So, uh, same type of format that we went through.
Um, and then, um, I don't know exactly, maybe there's still time, but um, I would love to provide you with my feedback on such a survey. Is it, is it survey something that is, is, there's some, um, willingness to, to give to board members to be able to give a community perspective on, uh, what that might look like?
Excellent point.
Yeah, I think, uh, we can, uh, create some survey, very similar, you know, or if not the same one, you know, like, uh, and, and give it to, to the board.
Probably the same, probably, well, I don't know if the same one's applicable because I'm not sure if it was.
I think it's similar. It could be.
Or if, and if there's a box, we can say any other items, then we can add our thoughts.
So yeah, I can work on something like that. And get it, and get it to.
It's not in the, my last thing, I think. Trying to move on from the principal search problems that I have, but the, um, you had, Mike had, had started a process, um, about kind of looking at an overview of the South Heagan documents, the constitution, the vision, the mission, the South Heagan six, all of that.
Yep.
And, um, uh, I, I'm not sure of the full breadth, but you know what I'm talking about. Um, I would think we would benefit from um, at some point, and then I'll have to go into it tonight. Uh, hearing what, passing that off or communicating, where are you? Doesn't have to, maybe it's not done. Maybe there's still brainstorm out there, but it's a draft. Um, I'm very curious to see where you're at with that because at some point there's going to be board decision-making going into that if, if, if there's modifications, if there's an evolution. And so what you found will be very, very interesting to start thinking about so that we can give you feedback and that we can start working collaboratively on what that might look like and build support community wise, especially if there are changes and there might be resistance to changes. Um, so we can help build that persuasive case together. It's the same logic with the principal.
Yeah. And we, uh, kind of put that project that was, that was a a project that we were kind of working on in, uh, 2021 and into the 2122. But as we started to focus a little bit more on supervision and evaluation and getting in the classroom and using our meeting time to support that work, we kind of put that on pause. But, uh, it's interesting that you brought that up because, uh, um, one of the things that we've been doing as an administrative team is reading, rereading hearts and minds. And, uh, and I can tell you the same problems in trends that existed when the book was written are still, we, we were trying to cross-reference some of the issues and trends that we are experiencing compared to the book. And, and so that project that when you're talking about and, and this one we are, there's conversations as an admin group to think about how to expand that into, into some summer work and into, to the next school year. But you know, with this transition as well, we're going to kind of wait to see kind of how things shake out and who's, who's where and doing what. And, uh, but I know that it still existed, but we just kind of put it on pause. But we also have some other things as we get a little more sophisticated with our work around that. So, but yeah, I can get update. I can, I can get an update.
Yeah, it would be great because we're going to, we're nearing a new board cycle. We're going to be setting goals. We're going to have a summer, hopefully another summer retreat or recess or, you know, kind of a day long, where are we? What are we doing? What are our, what are we, you know, and, um, you know, if, if, if there's a piece of an element of that that we can lock down, then they have to be comprehensive. Um, that'll help us set goals. That'll help us, um, with your budgeting priorities. That will help us sway support in the community and so on and so forth.
Yeah. And I think we, you know, we gave that update at the meeting in the summer last year, based off some of that work and, and, you know, we kind of, like I said, paused it, but we still have some other things that are connected. You know, that are emerging the longer we work together and, 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 uh, so, um, yeah, we can do that. We can plan for something like that.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, John.
Mr. Pete. Yes, a couple of things. Uh, number one, thank you very much for putting in the observation data in there because I knew the community was concerned about those things not happening in the past. And the fact that you meant almost all of your benchmarks there is, it's awesome. And the fact that we're pushing into classrooms, not in an effort to quote unquote supervised, but to provide coaching, right? And become better at your craft. And that's clearly represented in the principal's report. So thank you for that. Um, just one request, I know, uh, budget season is going to be done literally on Tuesday of next week, right? Um, the RFP request for driver's ed and driver's ed program, if we could put that on the radar to see if that's something that we can get out, uh, for the spring, so we can at least solicit some potential opportunities, uh, from, from, from that perspective. Um, and then, um, the, the one thing in terms of the, the survey going out to the community, I really like that idea in terms of the new principal. Just make sure that we reach out to Mobern as well, um, whether we push it out in your spotlight, uh, announcement over the weekend or on some sort of nixle push. So we can invite members of the community to go ahead and provide feedback there as well. Like, you can't go wrong, just getting that type of, uh, information data set from, from the community.
That all? Anybody else? Oh.
I, I just wanted to say that I'm really glad that you're looking at more of a cultural issue when it comes to those older documents that we have rather than just an operational issue. Um, especially with standards of mind and heart. I have that book with me right now, actually. Um, I, I just hope to see that we kind of fall in line with those expectations that are set in the documents, like in uh, the constitution policy CE, it states that any changes to that document would be approved by a group of students who are, I guess, appointed by a group of students. Um, so I just hope that that process is kind of followed through on as we look at this.
And I don't foresee a whole lot of any, or if any changes to the constitution coming down anytime soon. So just interpret, we're using it to, we interpret it to, to help guide our decisions.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
It doesn't exist right now.
No. But we have one or some, yeah, and I don't, I have to go back and look at my notes. Yeah, it probably, it might be.
Oh.
I, I don't know if I had ever got updated this year. I think it was last year.
I would like to take the fruits of your work. Perhaps also in conjunction with the new principal. This isn't some action that take tomorrow. And spread it out on the table, look at it and, and for each piece, either change it or affirm it as is. And, and say affirmatively, this is still valid. And make a statement about it. We have reviewed this and we commit to it. We remain committed to it. I think that sends a different message than just saying, well, we're not going to make any change. Like, it's like more active, it's more proactive and and it might energize, our actions might energize students to, to re-formulate the constitution committee. Maybe I, I just, if after 30 years of operation, that, that, that's kind of due. And if there's been a bit of turmoil and things and different attitudes, I think, I think that would be really helpful.
Anybody else have questions? Um, just two things on my part. Um, so with the evaluations, I know it takes quite a bit of time to do them. How is that balance working with getting that, those, all those evaluations done in the process that we do? And any work get not getting done because of that? Just out of, how's that balance?
For us, that is the work, right? You know, supporting teachers. Uh, so that's the thing, right? Like that's, that's what we want to be, be known for is administrators that help people improve at their craft, help creating environments in classrooms where students are engaged and stimulated and, and want to be there, right? It's a, it's a very challenging time to work with, with students and, uh, and our teachers are, are, are really reflective and, uh, and are willing and getting more and more comfortable engaging in that process with the dean of faculty, myself, the domain leaders, special ed admin, you know, and we feel like that is where we spend most of our time. Um, I think if I, you know, I, I, I think some of the work that maybe not, might not get done is, you know, what we're talking about there, like the, the reflection of the, the documents and, and things like that, because you know, we're looking at day-to-day supporting of teachers and, and, and making sure the environment for kids is as as good as we can make it. Um, so I think there, there's like things like that. I think, uh, the other piece that takes up a lot, uh, of time is, uh, is, you know, working on making sure teachers are included in committee work, that we have meaningful meetings, that we have meaningful PD. So you, I would say that are, you know, that, those are our two areas. And I think, you know, work around some of the documents and, and, and reflecting and, and like some of the innovative stuff that used to might have happened a little bit more. We're not spending as much time on that, but it's more about what's happening in our immediate to, to make sure people feel valued and seen and heard and practiced and kids are good, right?
Yep. So, thank you.
Could I just, yeah, that sounds like the perfect priority for you. Yeah. I think there's enough interest, at least for me personally, I can't speak for anyone else, to, to carry some water here. I mean, we, if you pass off wherever you ended up and like, here are the documents, here were some of our thinking, it's very nascent if that's true. We could take some of that, carry some of that water and push that a little bit forward in the process and brings things maybe back to you or the new principal or, and could be filtered out to other people so that your focus can stay where, where it is, what you're doing, because I don't, I wouldn't want to take your focus away from that. I still, at the same time, try to move something forward and, and that is, there's something squarely within our, our capabilities. So leave it at that.
Yep. So, and the, and the one piece I just want to ask about, um, the graduation requirements. I know there's a lot of talk in committees and groups talking. Um, at some point, the board needs to hear about that and, and partly they're bringing up because I, I want to make sure that it's not just brought to us in May and say, can you prove this? So we can start it next year when we haven't had a chance to absorb whatever it is you're looking at changing and why, like we need time to be brought on board to understand the why and the how and.
Yeah. And there's been a very thorough process, you know, and, and you know, students have been, you know, part of it, you know, we had a night. Uh, it wasn't that well, well attended, uh, by parents and, and, and community, but we got some great feedback. Uh, just this past Tuesday, it was part of our uh, staff meeting on, on Tuesday afternoon where your teachers looked at the work. And, uh, so I do foresee you getting an update. Um, and, you know, I think we're going to be really mindful of what we're presenting in the timeline on how to implement some of the recommendations and suggestions. Um, and, uh, so I'll be back in touch about, about that.
Okay.
Yeah. What are some of the big changes you guys are contemplating or at least considering?
Um, I don't really think it's, you know, substantial changes, you know, to the graduation requirements where where we, what being knocked around is expanding the amount of credits that are required for graduation, but not dictating what courses you have to earn those credits in. So like, for example, like maybe expanding the, the credit count from 22.5 to 25. You know, we have an eight period day. You know, so it's 32 chunks of time that still allows a student to have up to seven free periods and they, you know, take some electives, you know, or things that they choose to. And I can say that because the average, don't hold me to this number, please, but I think the average student graduates here with 26 to 27 credits, you know, anyhow. So we think that's like a reasonable thing. We want to create intellectually challenging experiences for our kids, when our kids to be busy and to be engaged with what they want, to be encouraged to try different things. And we think that's a way of it. Um, I think that's really some of the conversation that we're having. Uh, if I had to say, if there's a course that people are knocking around like, but we're not, we're not even close to, it would be some sort of writing. Like half, one semester writing piece. Um, but like, other than that, um, I think you'll see some things like what count, how do you obtain physical education credit? What are the pathways to do that, right? How, what, how do you obtain computer? You know, credit, right? Like, you know, the required computer bus, you know, uh, is advisory worth two credits out of the, the 22, right? And, uh, and so things like that, you know, so.
Cool. Thank you. Voice and choice is a huge piece of engagement in the learning process. The more voice and choice we can give for kids, the more engagement. Love the work about trying to become the most, providing the most choice of any school in New Hampshire on the course selection that kids can have. And you do that by requiring the state minimum and then giving a number. And then having that number, having students fill that number with what's best for their path, with their choice, their passion, that piece. That's the work I started at my old place. It is, um, it is in line with, of, of caring about every student. Because if you require something for someone, that means they can't take something else. And the notion about increasing electives and choice for kids is very powerful statement about that we value all kids. And I appreciate the work, Mike. Love to talk with any committee because the more voice and choice for kids, the more engagement and the more quality. And also there's a little bit of market economy there where teachers have to, right? When kids can choose. One of the things, if you require five sciences, hey, the kid's got to require it. But if you give kids choice, um, love it. Uh, and I do think the number of credits increasing and allowing kids to fill that bucket with what's connected to their passion, their interest and their choice is a, a great piece that I expect aligns very closely with the founding documents, which is what I've read in parts.
And I'll add one part, you see the, that I should have started from the jump, like, I don't know why, didn't remember. Well, we have had a great deal of conversation around division one, JLP, senior project, because their graduation requirement, you have to have community service hours. So if you expand credit requirements to that, can you weave in JLP into a, a course at the junior level? You know, and, or what does division one experience look like for our 10th graders? Uh, so we've had some of those type of conversations around like the other stuff that the kids do here and it's, you know, because that part's a little bit unique. You know, and, uh, so they'll see some conversation around that.
Can I say real quick, I assume you're not looking at getting rid of advisory. It's just a question of how does that work credit wise and how does it fit in this big piece? Okay.
Yeah. And advisory is a real, real tough thing to make equitable. Not all advisories are created equal.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And, uh, that's a hard thing. And, and, and I struggle with awarding credit for advisory sometimes based on what I know happens in some advisories, right? On a regular basis. And, uh, so more conversation on that, but advisory is not being removed by anything anyway. So.
I, I, I would, I would say nothing is sacred. I mean, everything you keep, you should justify.
Yep.
And, and recognize some of the challenges. Advisory has these challenges. We choose to keep it before we. Advisory has these challenges. We choose to keep it before we recommend keeping it for these compelling reasons. Um, there's other things maybe um that take up time that. We there's a question in the community uh for some people anyway about what happened to winter session. Is that coming back? Well, I don't know. We haven't been talking about it here. Well, that should be on your spreadsheet and there should be a. Recommendation to keep to keep it or ditch it or improve it. And here's the reasons and rationale why so that. Everyone has understanding whether they disagree disagree or agree with the decision that these are some compelling reason. Why you you made the decision. Um. I I wouldn't, I would include every every. To and to your goals, Steve, which is every minute counts. So every minute. Needs to be justified essentially. With me on that, right?
Hundred percent.
Seven periods or eight periods. That's a good question for instructional time. Thirty minutes after school. Some people are passionate about that. The club time. Well, is it really effective club time? Like, how can we integrate that better and? All of it. Should be um presented and justified or changed or. Or eliminated.
And I um. You know, and I think it is, as you and Stephanie and I talked briefly before this meeting, I think. That conversation is ripe for retreat.
Yes.
You know, and I'll be honest with you, this is, and I'm not trying to be, but this is my, this will be my seventh or eighth hour in board meetings this week. Um, it's it's back of probably forty fifteen to three fifteen hour days. Uh, and I want to be fresh and I want to be thoughtful and I want to be energetic to review. And for me, it is like, you know, it's a day where we can do that and have extended conversation. And 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 that's, I'll just bear my soul, it's a little bit selfish for me and we can't because I. I think you, we just described with our early conversation, this ripe for wonderful retreat. And with a new principal and Mike and and I I just, I think so. I I think you're right. It's just hard to have those conversations at the business meeting in my.
Well, I we don't need, no, the point is not to get into the weeds. The point is to. Put the vision out there so that we can schedule the appropriate time to really dive in and the retreat sounds. Sounds great. And along the way, if there are bits and pieces of this. Of of draft thinking of of here's some things we've been doing and. So that we can be as prepared as possible to retreat to be as. Give the best feedback humanly possible, then I then please start.
Yeah.
Dripping it out when it becomes available.
And we started notes and Mike and I talk regularly, but and and I'm looking forward to that kind of extended conversation without, you know, without the ceiling of just normal. Day of us.
Of course, absolutely.
Yeah. All right, uh, we don't principals report? Okay, moving on. Um, any questions on treasurer's report or facilities? Uh, report? All right, um, okay. So we will move on from there. Community council update, Ralph.
Uh, as Mike said earlier, there's not much to report on because it's not been very long since we updated last. Uh, but we have received and started discussing this week a proposal to. Um. Basically qualify sports that are listed as sports in the student handbook um as. A semester wellness, um. I think after two full seasons, there is a whole process involved where a student has to apply and actually talk to um. Somebody, right now it says the counseling director and next to it it says in parentheses sus- subject to change. So I'm assuming something happened at the meeting on Monday that I didn't hear about. Um. But there has to be a process of reflection and things that, you know, aren't necessarily covered in regular sports seasons, but are covered in wellness classes. Um. No ninth grade students would be eligible for this. They would have to take the regular John Dowd experience as students like.
The sophomores.
The John Dowd experience.
It's a spiritual journey, really.
He would enjoy you saying.
So, yeah, uh, it would be sophomores and anybody else who hasn't already taken that second gym class, um, would be eligible for this. Uh, other than that. Fang Fest went off without a hitch, as Mike said earlier. Um, I know our student activities coordinator. Had a concussion while she was planning it, but everything still went great. Uh, we got a vice coordinator to help her, so. Uh, it all went well. We're excited to work on this proposal. We have elections coming up after April vacation for um third representatives and. Community review board representatives. Community review board, I just realized, um, has our first case after being reformed. Uh, next week we'll be hearing a case and like you can talk to me about that privately if you want, because a student has decided that. They want the information to be public, but I'm not going to discuss on here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
A student eighteen years or older to make that decision? Sign on perfect, thank you. Sorry about that, I just appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, and and um. We will also be opening up. April to appoint May. In May, I think the May meeting or June meeting, the new community representatives to community council. So we'll get that information out. Probably in the April meeting for people to apply. Because there's a now the rotational basis. Some people are there for two years right now. There are some that are there for one. So we're going to start. The ones that apply this year will be there for two years. So we start rotating every other year, a group of people. So we'll be advertising for that as well. Great. Thank you very much, Ralph. And um, are you around for April meeting then? Our April school or Wednesday? Okay.
Uh, we have like a date.
It'll probably be the second Tuesday in April. Okay. Because yeah, I know you're you're. Thursday, Thursday, not Tuesday, Thursday, yeah, one of those days. Uh, okay, uh, community updates, uh, community update, sorry, committee updates. I can tell you, we did the um. One meeting at the Amherst Town Library on a Saturday. With the Amherst School Board and. One person from the public came in and spoke. To us, um, some questions about, and I would mention them to Steve a while ago about. Um. If a ninth grader comes in, is interested in be able to take biology or chemistry, is that? You know, why do we behold them to you have to finish your ninth grade classes before you start those other classes? So. I think that's in the mix of discussions for upcoming years. Uh, like, is there really a cut and dry stone of you have to do this class before that class before that class or can we?
That's probably easy to justify because like my experience, not that anyone cares and Steve does want to go home. Um, but your science follows your math. So the reason you would do biology in the tenth grade is that you need to get a certain amount of math in before you hit the chemistry hard. So, I mean, I suppose if a student was advanced in their math and. You all wanted to do something different, you could, but that would be your normal reason.
There's, right, and that's that all those things need to be looked at, but there might be people who qualify for. Different things. So that will be brought up through Mike or through the new principal and talk about. Different pathways of doing things. So that was a a good question. Uh, the most of the other questions were all for the Amherst School Board. That were there.
But we had more than one member of public presence. When I was there? We had three more come in. No, is is this a different time?
Yes, this is the February meeting.
Oh, well, but we had another one, didn't we?
No.
I'm so.
The meeting at the Amherst Town Library.
Where I was with you.
Okay. Um. Okay, so any other, any other, have we had any updates, Christine? Is there anything with the? Any of the trust money that we need to spend or? Bring forward? No, we haven't heard from the trustee of the trust funds or anything about money we need to spend. Each year, or Amy? Isn't there? One or two funds, there's supposed to be some sort of money we're supposed to spend each year, either on professional development or something.
We had, we had some discussions about, um, right, professional development next year and speakers next year.
Okay.
For that.
Okay.
Uh, those have been internal, so we have, and obviously Mike. Um, is very connected to to everything at this point. But yes, uh, Christine and I and 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 Michael, we have some ideas about some inspiration on August something or September something.
Okay.
Yeah, October something.
October something, sorry, I was going to say that.
October something.
Yeah. But it will be helpful, um, if it is a well-known speaker, we would need probably two years of funding to be able to.
And we're able to call call that over and go, okay.
It continues to roll.
Okay. All right.
Mike.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, any other committees? I know Tim was athletics or policy. Okay. I don't think there's anything else really on subcommittee, so we'll move on from that. NWEA insights report. Christine or Steve, is there a start off, start off point you wouldn't want?
Yeah, uh, Christine will will take um a- any questions. Um. What I was hoping tonight, um, this year, that anytime we talked about our scores. We would also be talking, looking at case study data about taking a look at students at different varying parts. Um, and I talked and and I was not able to get that work done. So there's. Different ways at looking at student achievement, student performance, one is which and Christine, and we'll talk about the output from NWA. One of the things that also we have to talk, Christine will take a look at this report, but we also, we're working with Matt, we can also look at NWE day data. To to support youngsters and screenings and things like that, which we do in some aspects of our operations. But I hope next year, when we do report this kind of data, we can also take a look. At a student experience, what happens? When is this a student who arrives at South Hegan as a freshman who is not on grade level and reading? What is that experience? What determined that? What was the screening? What was the intervention? How long is the intervention? What does that day look like? Is it double dose? Is it, and how do they exit and and follow youngsters also with a student who comes in here at the? Three percent at the top. What is that experience like? Opportunities for enrichment acceleration? Um, I'm I'm chagrined that because I, if you really, I I, this is good, but I also want more, not just the numbers, but take a look at the student experience and what kind of services. Went in or out. Christine and I had lots of conversations about that. Um, to be honest with you, there were times of the year this thing got away from me a little bit. Um, just because of of the the sheer volume of it. Um, next year with this experience and last year's experience, there is a lot of traction by the administrative team to take a look at case study of kids. And I really want to see how is the kid enter our intervention program, what are the services are, what is the progress monitoring look at, how do they exit that, what communication we have with parents? Um, that to me is is equal to value of what we're going to talk about here, which is on the global scale. This data is only i- is effective at looking at it from here, but we have to unpack it and we have to take a look at the child. And see how they're doing and how are they progressing at the at the child level. Um, we started that last year. Christine gave a wonderful presentation to this team here about how to unpack this data. Um, but I I was hoping I'd have more than just numbers for you, but next year we will.
Can I just say that I really appreciate that? I think I have a similar belief. That I think it's similar, that if you do what you just said. These numbers will show. The result. And it will invert this whole thing. The discussion will prove the point. The discussion will be easy to be like, we're doing it at the individual level and you can see it here. And the fact that we're not seeing it here at large means there's work to be done on what you just said.
There is.
I support that a hundred percent.
And thank you. And 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 it was it was Christine and Stephanie, when I talked to you first about the case study approach, I've talked about with all the boards this year and I just, I didn't get it done. Um, I didn't get it done in any of the places. It wasn't, I it wasn't sitting around reading the globe too much. It was just a little bit about trying to get my arms around this place. Um, but at least there's traction and momentum and desire to take a look at this. At Clark Wilkens, at Tom at Mount Vernon, at Kristen and Mike, Dana, Sarah, um, Katie Rawls here, so. Christine, thanks.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no. Um, I'll just, um, uh, clarify a few things in the report and then I'm happy to take questions. Um, first of all, this compares. Um, fall twenty twenty-one to fall twenty twenty-two. Um, and we ordered this report after our fall testing. It does take a while for them to compile uh this report. This is really a high level report that um pulls data. Across our entire SAU from kindergarten through tenth grade. Um, so while we provide it to the South Hegan School Board, we recognize that it's a very, you're a smaller piece of this um puzzle, but. We are one SAU and and we we definitely want to share, you know, our overall progress with all of our boards. Um, overall, uh, in the report, uh, you know, achievement is uh slightly above average and growth is um really. Right at that average level, um, when we're looking really big picture. So achievement levels, um, you know, sixty-eighth percentile, so that is strong achievement and growth is right at the the. Or it's at the fifty-first percentile, so um right around that average of the fiftieth percentile. One thing I wanted to clarify um in this report, and it's on page four of the report or sixty-three of your entire PDF packet. Um, there isn't a a indicator in here that talks about college readiness. And Steve and I have had deep conversations about this. It's something that's kind of a very quick term. That if um thought of um in one way could could really mean something very different than what NWEA is intending this to mean. Um, they're looking at whether a student is on track. To achieve um a set score on the ACT, basically meet that that college readiness. Benchmark on ACT. So that's what this number actually means and represents. It's a correlation between NWEA. And a projected score on ACT. So many of our student, some of our students do take the ACT, um, but um certainly not as many who that take the SAT. And this is just what NWEA has um. Uh, done, uh, you know, they did that linking study to link to ACT and make that determination around college readiness. We would argue many more of our students are ready to enter college um a- upon graduation than what this number is representing. So this number is really just representing whether students are getting either a twenty-two or twenty-four on ACT. Yes.
What is a, I I know nothing about how the ACT is scored, so. Like a twenty-two to a twenty-four is what percentile on the ACT?
I'm not sure what percentile that is. I'd have to go and check, but it's meeting benchmark to show that you're college ready.
So it's, I guess, I mean, I guess I I struggled with that a little bit, right? Because because if we look at the SAT. What? Six. Twenty-four hundred, perfect score? So it is?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen hundred.
We not have the fourth one, third one more?
No.
Okay, so sixteen hundred, perfect score. But obviously, so I guess you could say, obviously, if someone's getting sixteen hundred on the SATs, they're college ready. Um. But. Someone could get. Five hundred on the SAT and be combined and get into or attend a college.
Yes.
So I'm trying to get an idea of like, like, I mean, because if sixty-eight percent of our kids. Are prepared and able to get a five hundred combined score on the SAT, that's really, really, really terribly bad. If. Fifty, sixty-eight percent of the kids are on track to get the equivalent of a. I don't know. An an average median score of all children taking the SAT, and I don't know what that is currently. Then that's a different metric. So I guess. I guess I'm curious as to what level. They're measuring, presumably if it was an eighteen hundred level. Uh, sixteen hundred level, we'd have a incredibly small percentage, you know what I mean? So.
Yeah, and since um not a large percentage, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head and Mike have, might. Mike might have more details on how many of our students take the SAT. Um, it's even hard to look at um what NWEA is showing and compare it to our current population. I mean, they've done a. A solid linking study to show when a student gets a certain RIT score on NWEA, how that connects to um what they're likely to get on. ACT. Um, but it it's basically, um, you know, and. Uh, I I'm happy to work with Mike and pull some additional information on ACT and either send it out to the board or uh discuss. More at an upcoming board meeting, but um it it's the indicator NWE has used in this report. To make that determination as to how many students are on track for college readiness.
I think would just be a helpful to have a better understanding of what that metric means.
Yeah.
Would be a helpful thing for us and a helpful thing for the. Public and for a helpful thing for us to be able to explain.
Yes.
Because if you just look and you say, okay, you know, yeah. Sixty-eight percent are on track in a subject, I think is what it was on one of them, right? I mean, that's not a stunningly.
Right.
That doesn't. That doesn't make me think.
Woo-hoo.
It is. Um. And I and I couldn't tell, and I don't know, I mean, it wasn't obvious to see like, how does this compare to the state's average? What do we expect? Um, you know, we're just looking at ours. Um, so I don't, I don't have a good feeling myself on, okay, so are we outperforming a bunch of people or are we? Are we way below, not people, but you know, districts? Are we way below most districts? What does that mean in that bigger picture? So I I would love some more data at some point in the future on that.
Yeah, I'm happy to pull that. Um, and I did also want to say there are two different pages in this report that um have that college readiness piece on it. So.
The other one.
Yeah, so on page four, um, it refers to um the the students that are on track to meet college readiness in at least one subject. Um, and on page nine, it's referring to math ELA or ELA and math. Um, it doesn't reference in at least one subject. So it it it's a little confusing too, um, uh, with both of these, but it's really looking at. Um, you know, whether it's um. Uh, in at least one subject. Or um, uh, you know, combined.
And the one subject is actually out of two subjects.
Right.
I mean, because again, the way it's worded makes it sound like out of potentially five areas of study, we, you know, you've got. Great, we're doing okay and. You're doing all right and barely passing in. We, you know, you've got, great, we're doing okay and you're doing all right and barely passing in one.
Yeah. And there are sections of this insights report that I think it's really helpful and other sections that I think maybe aren't as helpful to us. And I, I do think that college readiness piece, because you're jumping, you know, you're, you're, you're making a little bit of a leap. You're leaping from how are our students on doing on N W E A? What could that equate to or is likely to equate to on A C T? And then saying because of that, we're then making a determination on college readiness. So those are some, some leaps that we're making there. But again, we wanted to provide the entire report.
I appreciate that.
Uh, just as a helpful guide.
Absolutely.
Could, could I just, I'll tell off that this, the, how we compare, this is just from past presentations from you. If I understand correctly, it's nationally norm or internationally.
International.
It's internationally norm. So it's baked in where we stand compared to the vast, that tens of thousands of hundreds of thousands, I don't know, millions, maybe?
Yeah.
Students who take this, who participate.
Millions, yeah.
And to also to your point about how do you communicate this or how do you make policy decisions or budgetary decisions? I mean, you see the graph is one thing, you read the words thirty two percent are likely, or only thirty two percent. I put the only in are likely on track in both reading and math. Yikes.
Yeah.
Forty percent are not meeting benchmarks in either subject. Yikes, twice. So now I would also say, just because it's bad news, doesn't mean we have to freak out and, and make excuses. I think what it means is we recognize what it is and say, and do the deep dive and be like, okay, well, where is it failing? And I think we're starting to do that work. I mean, this is representative, I correct me if you think I'm wrong on this, of, of the. Not quite the same level of attention we're, we're, we're doing in our teaching practices. All the observations are only a year and a half old. The focus on, on, on the student, the review of the time and the graduation requirement, the flexibility to the choice, all of this vision stuff that has come out with your arrival and your arrival too much is, is taking root and we won't really see that for a period. So I don't think this means it's a little catch your breath, but I, I choose to look at it like we're moving in the right direction. But it's going to take good communication and it's going to take, uh, you know, persuasive requests.
And a piece I want to just dive off of that real quick and is, the one thing I want to be up is that we're looking at this data and understanding what type of students are coming into Sohegan in the next couple of years. So we know we are prepared at the right level with the right teaching and the right supports. With whatever's needed.
And this is a preschool through twelve thing. Let's, let's engage at nine. We are looking at this, honestly, a lot of, the most conversation we're having about literacy, Christine is, is that Kathleen Murphy? Trying to dig in on literacy early because that's the most efficient, most important way. And Tom too. It's early elementary is, I mean, if we, if we had every student on grade level by fourth grade, it would change the world for five plus. We'll get there. Especially in time, Mike and I, we talk about a lot of stuff, but I think one of the things you and I've talked a lot about is leading through literacy. How you do it from a secondary, I mean, we both are a very similar journey. You know, I was a principal moved to soup, Mike's principal moved into soup, and we've already talked about leading to the literacy. It is one of the biggest thing for me is, is taking a look at unpacking literacy because it impacts every single learning experience. We're, we're at least talking about and putting our energy in the right places. I think.
Stephen, I know you had.
Yeah, so I got a ton of questions.
Yes, so forth.
First of all, we're, we're based on your experience, you're seeing trend lines here for, for the student populace. We in, I mean, basically looking at that page nine, right? Using exactly the quotes that everyone's talking about, E L A college ready sort of statistic of thirty two percent. You know, that could be a weaponized number by sub members of, of, of the populace saying, oh my God, you guys really are not doing well. What's the trend line for that that you've seen?
So first of all, I did want to clarify with that, that's looking at fifth.
Through.
Fifth grade and up. So this is not just taking.
The ability, you're on track to be ready for college. Has nothing to do with whether or not you are ready for college.
Correct.
So a third grader who doesn't do well on the stats.
This one starts with fifth.
I'm sorry, fifth. So fifth grade, they don't do well, you know, it's impacting that number saying we've got wood to cut. And I know that we don't use these, these results for anything other than internal reviews to say, hey, how are we doing? Where can we put more emphasis or focus from a curriculum standpoint, from a faculty standpoint, from development? Like, I understand that, but from a trend line standpoint, are we on the way up? You know, COVID year obviously impacted some of these results. What, what's going on from a trend standpoint?
Uh, so I have looked at a number of these and COVID certainly did impact. These numbers haven't come up since COVID and we only have been doing this report for a few years. And I'd have to go back, I think maybe only one year before COVID possibly. So again, you kind of like at least three data points and with COVID interrupting some of our, our data points, it's hard to make too many generalizations. In, in looking at our data in general, not just this report, but even starting to dive in deeply, we do also take N W E A in the winter for kindergarten through eighth grade. And we are starting to see some growth. We are starting to see some recovery at some grade levels. And I started digging in really deeply, even with our fall data, grade level by grade level and looking at a three or four year trend for those grade levels. So pre-COVID, what was happening during COVID and now what's happening? Where is that trend moving? And some grade levels have nearly fully recovered, gotten back to that same status level or achievement level pre-COVID. Some are still working on that. And for the most part, the, the grade levels that are still working on that recovery piece. And again, picture looks a little different in Amherst than in Mount Vernon, which again, this report won't do. It's, it's digging more deeply into that data. And I'm happy to present, whether it's to the S A U board or to individual boards, looking at your current grade levels and that four or five or six year trend, whatever the board would like to really be able to see that progress and see have they recovered? And for grade levels that haven't quite recovered, there is a, a national trend. N W E A just put out a recent report to say which grade levels they've seen that have fully recovered or nearly fully recovered. And what grade levels have not, we don't always follow the national trend. And it's interesting because some of the grade levels that are struggling the most, we're hearing from our teachers that it's more of the social emotional piece and some of the struggles around being a student and being able to, you know, sit in a classroom and be a student and work together and have some of those, those skills that they need. And our teachers are working closely with students on those pieces. So it's hard to take this report to compare because it's so much data that I almost feel it's better to dig in grade level by grade level, look at what the national trend is saying and looking at where we are and whether we've gotten to recovery. Few little things at the lower grade level, they realigned the K two test, the scoring of the K two test, because there used to be this like huge gap between the K two. While it's supposed to be one continuous, you know, RIT scale, it is, there was always a jump between when kids move from the K two to the three, five test or the two, five test, I'm sorry. And, and when that jump happened, there was like a gap and kids always dropped. So they realigned right upon returning from COVID. They realigned the K two test. So there's actually a year we can't even compare and they told us not to compare. So we have a little bit of a challenge with some of the earlier grade levels, trying to, to follow those cohorts through. But happy to do that. It's just a little harder on this report to do. And I haven't seen as much of an increase in this college readiness indicator in this report being on necessarily an upswing, at least not yet.
Okay. Uh, just.
Does that, did that answer?
Three more. Yeah, yeah, I did. Thank you. So on page ten, we go ahead and we actually break down by grade, right?
Yeah.
So this board's heard sort of conversations in the past about sort of the lack of structure or support between the eighth and ninth grade trends, right? And so I'm so used to seeing K through six of Mount Vernon, success, some scores, then go into this rut and then back up to the situation where we're trying to correct that or alleviate that in 10th grade. How does that correlate now to the S A T score that we used for the higher grades? Are we still seeing the continuous improvement trend there? Like ninth grade is the dip out of eighth grade, 10th grade, based on this report is an increase. We seeing an increase in eleventh and twelve?
So it's hard to compare. I would have to do an analysis. And N W E A does have a projected proficiency to S A T. So you can actually pull based on, starting really in fifth grade, which again is early. You can actually pull for how many students are projected to be proficient on S A T at those grade levels. I haven't done that deep analysis recently, a few years ago I did, and it was pretty similar. If I looked back at what was the projected proficiency, pretty similar to what our outcomes actually were on S A T. But, and again, I was doing that a closer, like looking at ninth grade data to then where were they in 11th grade? You know, our goal is always to look, you know, to provide those supports necessary to have more students meeting that proficient level on S A T than what we were anticipating meeting. We were able to move the needle significantly for the students that, you know, we had in ninth grade or in 10th grade, were we able to have more proficient by the time that they were doing S A T? And one thing, you know, as Steve supported and Mike supported last year was our S A T, a, a support or, or preparation program, which is an important component. And I didn't do the analysis yet for that cohort and whether we, you know, saw that progress or not. But I certainly can look into it more deeply to see if we're, because that's always what we would want.
Because what I'm, what I'm really getting at is using two structures of testing, right? So Mewa for our younger grades, because it incorporates everybody. And then the high school is the S A T, right? And so our 11th and 12th graders don't even fall into the spectrum. And so from a management standpoint, it must be really tough and, and difficult to see a trend, whether or not there's an obstacle and stuff. So I know during our budget conversations, we talked about leveraging one exam for the high school. Is that still something that you think we could address and still identify a gap between eighth and ninth grade?
You know, we, we've started to have some of those conversations as to whether we might be making an adjustment or a switch there. And we certainly can, you know, I, I think the goal would be in ninth grade, right? Mike, that we would still do N W E A and that was the change in 10th grade.
Yeah, because they're doing P S A T this spring.
So the, the 10th graders this year are going to be participating in the P S A T as 10th grader. And then juniors take the P S A T in the fall. Junior gambles with the S A T.
Yeah.
So they'll have three. A conversation that we want to have at the height of, how Wegan High School wants to have with the S A U is potentially not having the new one, the ninth grade, but going to the eight, nine P S A T. So there's a shift from K eight to eight, you know, but we have to have that conversation. This year we started with the 10th grade and we want to see how that goes, you know, how kids respond to it. And, and how much energy they put into it and what the results are and look at that, see, you know. And so we'll know on March twenty second, you know, it goes down. And then, then we're going to kind of reflect on that and then maybe make some recommendations for, for the next year. So we just got to do some work after the spring administration, the P S A T and over the summer.
Okay.
And, and I think there is certainly a lot of value in looking in at that for a number of reasons. Number one, there's, we, we wonder how much N W E A fatigue there is, starting by the upper middle school and into high school. And also if the format and structure of the P S A T, certainly more similar to S A T. And, you know, we want our students to be as successful as they can be and, and really truly show what they know on that assessment. So if that's going to help us to get there, that's certainly a lot of value in that. Again, this does link to S A T, but it's just a linking study. And again, there could be some error in there. So when you're looking at P S A T, you're going to have, you know, a pretty strong connection there to whether that student's on track for, for meeting benchmark.
Thank you. I'm using enough airtime.
No, no, it's okay. If you have other questions, please.
No, I'm good.
You're good? Anybody else?
Yeah, just to follow up on. It's interesting. They, they are doing a study to benchmark something to S A T, but their college readiness is benchmarked to A C T. I mean, but, but I don't know that it really matters because they're very similar. I took both. I don't know. They've changed a whole lot. Thirty six is the max on that A C T, by the way. Or at least these.
Yeah.
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 But I think Stephen O'Keefe raises a good point, like you're, we will, we want to see high, high achievement and high growth. We want to, we want to lift our struggle or students and, and let fly our high achieving students, right? So. But it's, I think back to Steve's philosophy is, I think if we get that right, what you talked about at the beginning of this, then these numbers will take care of themselves. S A T scores will take care of themselves, A C T or whatever, college readiness will become self evident. And you go, the students will go into these tests and just be like, oh yeah. These things won't be hard for them. That's my hope for most students that they'll, that this will be routine and rote rather than, oh my God, oh my God, it's so challenging. So I hope we see that outcome in the future.
What else? No question? No, I'm done? Thank you. Really appreciate it. Appreciate it. I know there's, there's a lot of information in here. If there's, yeah, if there's follow up questions, you know, send them through me and we'll make sure we get them over to Christine and get follow up. So I'm sure there, there will be a few. We keep looking at it.
There was one year, Christine, sorry, that you, you had like a, you know, a matrix and, and then the diagonals were of the same color when we were tracking cohorts for something. Was that, was that, can't remember, was that Mewa results or some, something? That was really cool because you could, you could see it, how the, whatever performance metric.
Yeah, that was our math evaluation, I think.
Was the math?
That we did, yes. And it tracked cohorts through and it looked at progress.
Yeah, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, it was.
To the extent you have data that you can present like that, I would say, please do.
Yeah.
That was, I remember that being very clear, it pops and you could already just see the trend lines very easily.
Yeah. Great. I'm happy.
I don't know if that lends itself for new stuff. It does.
Yeah, it does.
So it was like that.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I, I do see and I just. Couple of things made me think, but when you look at the chart that talks about the median, like the readiness and the, it goes by grade level, the math and the E L A, and you see that jump, it's 10. That's really our ninth grade students and, you know.
It will, so the ninth grade instructional year.
So honestly, kudos to our ninth grade teachers for digging in and really improving those students.
For a number of years, we have had extremely strong growth from ninth to 10th grade.
Yes, and we can see that and it stands out and that is fantastic to see. Yeah. So thank you to the teachers for all their hard work and digging into that too. Okay, moving on, Amy, the food service program.
Yes. So you have some information in your packet. Apologize for the yummy looking food on the memo at dinnertime. Now my stomach is growling. So, so yeah, so this is a practice that I hope to, or plan to, um, to do moving forward is to provide quarterly updates on the food service program. So I think what we'll do going forward is we'll put it in the consent agenda. And then if you, if you have questions and want to pull it out, we can talk about it. But just to have this as a regular update, I know it's not something that we've done in the past, but I think it's, it's, um, it's important to, for, to keep you folks abreast of what's happening. So Crystal put together just a brief memo on personnel and kitchen equipment. And then I'll talk a little bit more about the finances. But just to highlight some of the hard work from our kitchen staff. Mark Newton does a fantastic job and is looking to increase revenue to try to offset some of our expenditures this year. And is doing this by offering some sort of advisory catering to encourage the kids to stay on campus instead of going off campus for lunch, right? So it's kind of a.
We should have catered dinner.
You know, two way benefit. And also offering some, some really nice teacher to go dinners and he puts out those out on Slack and they've been very popular. So. So we also, in terms of kitchen equipment, we had the new ice machine and merchandiser have been installed. We also discovered that there was an electric oven in the annex kitchen. So I remember we had talked earlier about needing to replace two of the ovens. So we're going to install this new one, but we won't need to purchase that oven in F Y twenty five. So there's some cost savings. So we were able to work with our, our staff electrician to get that figured out. So pretty excited about that. There'll be some good savings, you know, close to $20,000 that we won't need to spend.
Found an oven.
We did. I know. My goal has been to find, I've been trying to find money all year, so.
Maybe our teacher wasn't using that for some.
No, right?
Been doing this a long.
She knew about it, she would have been used for art.
Yeah, so. I know, well, this, we did, Cr- Crystal did, so. Um.
What else can we talk?
I, I, I found a few things this year. Yep, so moving on to the financials, um, not awesome news. We're looking at a projective, projected deficit of um, about 16,500. However, we budgeted a transfer of 20,000, so we're covered. Um, we originally inherited from the FY22 default budget, a um, a transfer of about 41,000. And when we redid the default budget to cover other items, we reduced that to 20,000, so we're still okay. Um, but certainly those are some of the reasons why we're looking to um, to increase revenues. So that's, that's a goal. Uh, the second page of the report just provides really the change in participation rate. And the number of meals sold from um, from last year to this year. And that's um, obviously due to the, to the change and how lunches are not free anymore, breakfast and lunch. So you can directly see the impact of this, which I thought was really great data for, for Crystal to, to pull, for the board to see. So that's the information. Um, if you have any questions. But as I said, I plan to provide this quarterly, so we can all keep an, keep an eye on it. Uh, we'll do one in June and then next year's first report won't be too meaningful. Cause we'll only have been in school for, for a month, but might as well just provide it um, on a quarterly basis. So Crystal and I do meet weekly. Um, we look at projections um, at each of our meetings. And try to come up with ways for, for course correction. She's always looking to try to reduce costs where she can, but this year uh, supplies and, and food costs are, they have increased. So that's really what is primarily impacting um, the increases in expenses this year.
It follows, you know, the, the National School Lunch Program, MyPlate, we have to have a certain number of nutrients per plate. Uh, what they select à la carte versus it. So it's not as simple as just running molten's here, it's Howie and High School, right? It is highly regulated. That uh, that being said, one of the things that, decisions that um, Mike will lead on next year with the board, with Amy is on the price. Uh, what is the cost, right? We have 16,000 meals. If you raised them by 50 cents, that would cover half of your deficit. But is that reduce some of your participation rate, right? It's always that piece. Um, other things that happens, um, next year we'll be negotiating PPC. Uh, is PPC do with food service in here? Are they covered by food service?
Yeah, so, yes, and so that is something that um, that we'll want to take a look at in terms of how contracts are structured. Right now, the contracts for staff are um, have um, a set number of days. So as throughout the year, there are various times when um, different classes are off doing different things. And um, classes, I mean grades. So it's, it's possible that we could stagger and have some folks maybe not have all of the days in their contract. But that's something that I think we'll need to discuss with PPC. But is, it is a way to um, potentially look at uh, reducing wages and benefits.
Something.
Based on need, so.
In structure in the school day, um, I mentioned it very briefly Monday, Monday. And you're talking about, and Mike and I have had a very dangerous conversation, you know, just about advisory right now is coupled with lunch. Um, that has, that impacts lunch participation, just does. Um, cause this on, on a high school is typically, if you have a shot at not running a deficit in school lunch, it's at the high school. Because the à la carte plus the creativity and plus the stuff, that does mean I'm not concerned. Crystal and Amy are doing the right thing, um, but it is something that we'll continue to monitor and look at, including the, the wages and benefits of, of workers. Um, but it is something that, you know, we need to look at. There's uh, there was one high school that I was aware of that pulled out of the National School Lunch Program. Um, they went off it to run as a kitchen. You know, of my, much different choices, much different. Um, when I investigated that for my last gig, um, they increased revenue, uh, but they were fighting. They were trying, they were so, they were losing so much business to five guys in those type of rest, and they had no choice but to try and compete.
What did they give up to?
That means you get no reimbursement.
No reimbursement.
So, you know, right, you, and then they chose to, no reimbursement for anything, they just ran it themselves. And they, but they also had no limitations on the price. Um, cause right now, the, the federal government gives us a window about the price that we can charge. I don't know if they're still there, it was a while, like, it might be interesting to make a phone call to that, or to see what they're at. Um, but I love what Mark does, I love what Crystal's doing and Amy's doing, um, it's something we're gonna have to look at. Um, because to, to put, um, I haven't, I mean, I talked about this in the budget process. I usually put a buck in there and do it out of fund balance, but to structurally put 20 grand in to support it. Um, it's great and it's my, it's a very conservative approach, um, which makes Amy sleep better at night. Um, but something we'll look at, but we're gonna watch this, we're gonna take a look at this and try to see, but I've.
It's always kind of. Way back when, I, I remember when these, you know, we started doing this um, structuring it this way. We did pretty well, we were able to, to fund it. But I, looking back over the last few years, we've had deficits, except for last year, so, yeah, yeah. So, and so this is a better than projected deficit? I mean, a deficit is still a deficit, so it's not good. Um, and I think we want to shrink it as much as possible, but we did budget, I believe it was 15 for next year. So we're sort of in line with, you know, what we would hopefully expect, so. Right, right, yep. And we can look, as Steve said, look at um, at increasing prices modestly um, as well, so.
So Amy, out of, out of that number there, what percentage of that, or if you know, um, is uncollected funds from student accounts?
Um, I don't have that. Well, I could, I could, I have it, but I'd have to get it.
Yeah.
Um, but I can have that for the, the next quarter report.
Yeah, I'd just be concerned if, if it's a small percentage, then it obviously it's a moot point, but if it's a bigger percentage, then, you know, convincing those folks to sign up for. The reimbursement program, which I know you can't identify a student, say, hey, you need to sign this.
Well.
Um, but encouraging them more proactively, other than what's historically been.
We're actually very proactive in this.
Yes.
Um, so we've, we have inherited a um, a large deficit that has accumulated over the years.
Yeah.
And um, when Crystal came on board and then this whole year, we have been working to reduce that. Um, at some point, we're just gonna have to write that off and just go forward with the current um, negative balances. They have, they have definitely improved this year. Uh, Crystal does uh, identify families where this is a situation and emails them regularly.
Okay.
Um, and, and send them the free and reduced application. So we're actually very proactive, um, and for some folks where it's been a perpetual problem. Um, the superintendent will be um, sending out some information.
Do they get the.
Right.
Cotton cheese sandwich, so they get something?
No.
Nice, can they get nothing?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, oh, I apologize. Okay, so they do get something, right? For a second, I thought we were going to think we're not giving you anything, I was like, whoa. So JB. Okay. Everybody gets, but um, à la carte is not.
But, but yes, we are actively tracking that for all three districts. Um, great. So I can, I can, you know, have her include the, the total dollar amount, percentage for this current year, so.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah.
But it will be, I mean, it was, it's a process that with the auditor, you do write off. It's the cost of doing this.
I.
Yeah.
I think it's cool you're putting this into our regular uh, awareness.
Yep.
Um, because now we have an opportunity to really provide some feedback. And um, how many athletes, families have a deficit in their activity funds? Zero? I mean, my point is, very few, I suspect, and yet we're, people seem to take this for granted. So I would never say, take a, a lunch away from, a meal away from a kid, it's not their issue.
Right.
Um, but some, some pressure, um, you know, maybe is warranted if, if people think that this is just really nearly. I mean.
A debt, it's a debt, I agree.
Right, uh, yeah. I mean, draconian, but something like, you know, you, no, 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 not even the meals, just. I don't even know, I have even hesitate to even venture something, but there's, there's a lot of extras here. A lot of privilege here, a lot of choice here. And I don't want to punish the students on, on, for, for parents who are sort of negligent in this, but um, I, I don't know. It's, speaks to our, I don't know, something about our respect, trust and courage and the motto and all that. To, to let that stuff languish, I don't know. Be interested to see how, how, where that goes in your expectations, I'll just leave it at that. Oh, sorry, one other thought, um, and maybe this is hard to Mike or Golladay. Um, would you, is there any research that indicates that student participation um, in preparing lunch? Might increase participation in, 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 in general?
Good question. Um, we've had ELOs, I've had ELOs in kitchens. You know, we, we have the two culinary programs, but um, kids getting into it and supporting it. I don't know if there's any research about the connection of kids preparing it versus utilization, but it's interesting. But um, we have, uh, we would run an ELO for someone who wants kitchen expert.
Um, appreciate that. Uh, the next is the composting program, we're actually going to hold off on this. Steve, I'm gonna ask them at the new meeting, that we put it on, we'll discuss it later, and something that they want to notice the detail of. Not available here tonight. Um, I mean, it's really an SAVY potential program that actually is. So the last, last, we wanted to talk staffing, we want to be public input.
So, uh. So I'm to not hold.
Yeah, I'm thinking, anyone online?
Uh, there was someone online, but I don't.
All right, we'll do that check and then some staff.
Oh, not anymore.
Not anymore? Okay, so. Um, staffing, so how would you like to?
So we can just, um, and, and this talks about what, what, what Mike spoke about. Um, so tonight, I consider is one of the biggest nights of the year for a board. Um, it is nomination of staff for 2324, including um, um, the teachers who per statute would enter continuing contract status. Um, big night, and I've talked about this with Mike and I've talked about this, uh, that when I moved from a principalship to a superintendency. Uh, one of the things that becomes most evidence is uh, length of time of impact of decision. I hope tonight we are providing a decision that will be, have a 20 to 30 year impact. Um, with a teacher that I will be recommending for continuing contract. It would be my great honor and privilege for that person to impact this place for the next 20 to 30 years. Um, but that is the potential, um, because of what um, the, what it means in, in the state of New Hampshire. And one of the things when I first started, I didn't realize that it, it's commonly referred to as tenure, but tenure is not in the New Hampshire statute, that doesn't exist. It really is the right to due process in a dismissal. And that's what um, we are granting tonight, when a, when a teacher moves, if they've had uh, continuing contract status in another district, which is three years. Then it was three years plus one here, they would get that privilege or right here. Um, for a, a teachers who this is their first teaching position in New Hampshire, they have five years to assess their ability. And, and so once they have that, um, then it is the, uh, if there is a dismissal process. It is on the board that decides who, who creates the South Heagan School District Standards for Teacher Performance. And then a superintendent would have to make the case to the board on why a teacher did not meet those standards in asking for dismissal, a hearing. Um, before that, there is no hearing and there is no requirement to um, state any reason why. Someone may, is not continuing as a teacher. And tonight we are nominating the slate for 2324. Um, and the um, the contract status. The only um, here, and we can talk, and we can talk specifically about the slate and on public.
I prefer that.
Right, we, it was really just process now.
Okay.
Um, and just so this is the public process, we can talk more about the slate. Um, and it just, um, and we'll talk more about just more mechanics and not public by specific position. Cool beans?
Um, let me ask a process question. If a person, oh, if, what you're, what you're saying is. If we keep them after the fifth year, they are automatically enjoy the privilege of termination with cause.
Correct, you have to show cause.
Okay.
I would have to, and you would be the judge of the board.
So it's either that or let them go is, is essentially the decision, the administrative decisions being made.
That is correct.
And then process wise, um. Are these? Are these the building principles? True. In the choices in the first instance, how does it, who, where do you get your list? And how do you verify or modify the list that you receive?
Great question, I should, I should have addressed, thank you very much. So um, the, the list actually here starts in HR department of every employee teacher, the, the years and whether they are eligible. They have traveling tenure, portable tenure, they have the three years or the five. And then um, we, Mike and I met earlier in the year to talk about teachers who, uh, we have just, you know, interested in, in special notes. And then we have the meeting, which we review every single staff member, talk about their eligibility for next year continuing contract. Um, it is the soup by statute is the certified, uh, credentialed superintendent is the only one that can put names in nomination. Um, but I've been completely transparent, Mike knows this, and I was a principal, we rely very heavily on the principal. Um, we had, Mike and I worked very closely together, Christine joined those meetings, uh, Amina joined those meetings, um, Dana joined those meetings. Probably other people too, Katie.
Certain times.
At certain times, so we did an exhaustive thorough review of every single person. And one of the things that I have great faith and confidence in, because I've been very close, is the work of Mike seeing these teachers multiple times. Right, we have informals and we have a clinical, we have a thorough, and they have invested like I've never seen a secondary school. As Stephen alluded to, to Mike's report, the number of times we've seen teachers in action provides me with the confidence in making these nominations. But it is the superintendent's relying on building people. And, and I, because of my job last year, I have seen many, I've seen lots of these teachers, even this year. Uh, earlier, when, before I got to budget season, those couple of weeks, I did walkthroughs with all the administrators here, with Sarah, with Dana, with Mike and Katie. So I've visited probably 20 classrooms this year, last year I probably did 70, did about 20 or so, just different.
Yeah, different role.
But we did it, you and I hung out, remember, it was fun back then.
How, how would you resolve a process wise? Um. Uh, disagreement between the decision from the sup, from the building leadership and the superintendent leadership?
Um, so if, if it, there's a cusper? If, if someone has a, a, on the cusp of getting continuing contract, then we have to be unanimous.
Unanimous.
Has to be, because we are granting, like, we talk about million dollar decision. 30 years of someone, if Mike and I do not agree, and, and Christine and all the people in the room, then we would not bring it forward for complete.
And so, so, okay, how, so who's in the room? You, Mike.
Christine.
Christine. Um, Dana, you said, four.
Yeah, and then it was a special education person, it was Meg Beauchamp and Katie.
Meg and Katie, six.
Yep, they were involved, uh, there was two who were involved with special education.
Who were the special education teachers?
Yep.
Or that.
Yep.
People who are to be nominated. Unanimous.
For that.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm just thinking it through.
You know, and you'd be like, we have five years, we have to assist you. And we work with teachers for that, we, we really believe that we could potentially, we, we, our vision of. About we, we talked about, and I'll be honest, last year there was, there was a question on Adam's.
So.
I did a lot of that last year in the school. I did a lot of, of teachers that she really wanted somewhat different. That's one of these things.
Yeah, so that's for. Yeah. So that's for, so the unanimous decision. So if someone is coming up and it's going from, they're going to continuing contract. That's you to admit, to make the positive choice. Yes, keep them is unanimous decision. Okay. And then what about the decision making for the person who doesn't not make that cut? Is that a unanimous no? Or is that just sort of, um, read the, yeah? Well, I guess. Ultimately, it's the custom decision, I guess, is the real critical piece, but, but I, in, in general, it's still, it's still true. I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, um. And this is a question we were asking for a while and never really under, got the, the, the hiring and firing philosophy. So this is why I'm peppering you with all this. Um, is, is that. I think it's important to know who's making the calls. Obviously, it's ultimately the superintendent's responsibility to, to, to affirm the list, whatever it's created. And to bring it to the board and that was the board's obligation to elect or not elect. I get that. But I think we want to know that there's some, there's some faith and there's some evidence that, um, that the decisions are being made from the people who are working most directly with these people. Particularly the building principal, that, that, that that person has authority and control over their building. And they, and that their decision is not just a voice in the room, but it commands a, a, a high level of respect. And, and deference. And then to override that requires something. Material and significant and not just whimsical and, and something that of an exercise of power.
I worked every day, three years. Incredibly satisfied and, and with the work and due to political climate, the superintendent was considering not taking my nomination. And I said, if that's the way you go, then basically you are saying that you would like to be the high school principal. And if you want to be the high school principal, then you certainly don't need me. And he chuckled. He liked it when I got spicy. And he said, I get it. But I was 100% sure that the best person for that position was the person in that position. After working closely with that person for three years, felt that that was what's best for kids. And I had the ability through my observation and evaluations. And one of the things that I want to get to here. Is the establishment of summative evaluations, yearly for probationary staff. Um, deep reflection and thoughtfulness about teachers, because that's not a part of our evaluation system yet. But that's an area that I, I wanted. This year, I had all the principals write to me a memo regarding the. What they've seen in the classroom, what their strengths are and what areas for improvement are for everyone who are making a custom decision in paper to me. Because I, that's important to me. And I hope, and I talked with all the P P C people and the eight and the, uh, the collective bargaining people. About laying the frame, the groundwork for summative evaluations. That's incredibly important part. Christine, I've talked about this a lot. How do we manage it? Cause you talked about the work. And it might be cuspers. This year I did cuspers. Those on the cusp, you had a written thing to me. Um, it could be first year probationary. It could be every three year for veterans. Um, but we're working on it. We're getting it. But this is a very, very important night, very, very important.
Yeah.
And it's taken, you know, Christine and I talk and Mike and I talk about loose tight. There's, there's this loose tight leadership. Like I want Mike to know what I think is loose, what you can be loose and casual to and what you need to be tight. This is not a casual night. This is a very important, it's about as serious it gets in my business. About, A, the whole teaching slate for twenty three, twenty four, but also giving someone the right to do classes. We need to do this well. We need to be right. We need to have confidence. Tonight, we are meeting that standard.
Great. I'm, I don't need a survey to say that that. Opinion, that attitude and philosophy, I think is something we were looking for in our next principal. And I hope, I hope you share it, uh, being our next superintendent to, to have that command and control. That's be refreshing.
Okay, so I think we need to go on to.
Thanks. Move, 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 uh, and make a motion to move us into non-public. Oh, always. Oh, uh, Glover, yes.
P P C.